The Jinx Planning Commission for Thursday, November 6, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. We'll start with a roll call. Brandon, please.
Wilson, Boers.
Here.
Bowman. Sellers.
Nixon.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Chair West.
Here. We do have a quorum. We're going to implement a couple of new things this meeting. We're going to have an invocation and pledge of allegiance to start our meetings off. Will Spoon, if you would, come forward, please. Will's going to lead our invocation. Will's been a citizen of Jinx a little over five years now and is a minister at the Park Church of Christ at 96th and Garnett and has done that for a little over 20 years. Correct. Will, if you would, please. Let's go ahead and stand for that, and then we'll remain standing for our pledge.
Would you pray with me, please? Father, we pause at the beginning of this meeting to acknowledge your presence and seek your wisdom. You are the creator of all things, the source of order, beauty, and goodness, and we thank you for the gift of community and the privilege of serving in it. Tonight, as we gather as stewards of this city entrusted with decisions that shape not only streets and buildings but lives and futures, I pray that we'll grant these leaders discernment that rises above preference or politics, that you give them clarity of mind, patience of heart, and a spirit of cooperation. Where opinions differ, grant grace; where challenges arise, give courage; and where progress is made, may it serve the good of every neighbor. In this season of growth where opportunity meets understandable concern, help us not build not only with plans and policies but with compassion, integrity, and humility. I pray every decision made here tonight will bless generations to come and bring peace, progress, and a future that honors you. We offer this prayer in the name of our Son and our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Something else we're going to start with tonight is just a brief description of how our meetings work and what can be expected tonight, and then also after that, a summary of the rules regarding public comments in our meetings. Welcome to tonight's public meeting of the Jinx Planning Commission. Before we move to our business items, I'd like to briefly explain who we are, what we do, and what to expect during tonight's meeting. The Jinx Planning Commission is comprised of seven citizens of Jinx who are appointed by the City Council to serve terms of three years. Every seat on the commission is filled by an unelected citizen volunteer. We receive no compensation for this service. The Jinx Planning Commission plays a key role in the development process by making recommendations to the City Council on community development issues, zoning ordinances, zoning map amendments, preliminary and final plat, subdivision plats, specific use permits, and land use plans. We hold public meetings like this one to gain information and advice from professionals, citizen groups, property owners, and developers. The Planning Commission and City Council are separate bodies. The Planning Commission is a recommending body and functions like a technical consultant to the City Council. City Council is the legislative body and makes the final decisions as it deems appropriate. Tonight, we have an agenda that we must adhere to. By statute, we are not permitted to have discussion or answer questions that are not listed on the agenda or pertain to an item on the agenda. There may be some public concerns or questions that, because of laws governing open meetings and public hearings, we cannot address tonight. We are not insensitive to your concerns, and we will make every effort to note these concerns and questions and help obtain answers through the appropriate channels. As we proceed with the business items on the agenda, we will first hear the staff report delivered by the city planner, followed by a period of time reserved for questions by commissioners. The applicant or applicant's representative will have the opportunity to make a presentation to the Planning Commission, followed by the applicants. Following the applicant's presentation, the floor will be open for public comment, and members of the audience may address the commission with questions, concerns, or in support of the application. After the public hearing, the floor will be closed. The applicant may be given additional time to address questions or specific concerns to raise during the public hearing. The Planning Commission will then vote on a recommendation that will be forwarded to City Council. Comments from attendees may only be made at times when the presiding officer has opened the floor for comments. Commenters must be at the podium. Comments and questions are not permitted to be shouted or made from the floor. Commenters should return to their seat when a staff person or another commenter takes the podium. Commenters shall begin by stating their name and address. Each commenter will have a maximum of three minutes per agenda item. Commenters shall always remain courteous and respectful. Comments shall be directed to the public body as a whole rather than to any specific person. Discussion on agenda items shall be limited to the matter presently before the public body. Commenters shall confine their remarks to the merits of the particular measure to avoid comments and avoid comments which would tend to embarrass other persons or attack their motives. The presiding officer may terminate the comments of any individual speaker on an agenda item for violation of council rules. Let's move on to our business. Agenda item number one is consideration and appropriate action relating to a request for approval of the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent are considered by the commission to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. Any commissioner may, however, remove an item from the consent agenda by request, and a motion to adopt the consent agenda is not debatable. We have A, B, C, and D on our consent agenda tonight. We can hear that as one motion, or if anybody would like to discuss one of those further, we can pull that off. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Brandon, let's vote, please.
Boers.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Chair West.
Yes. Agenda item number two will be pulled. Item three is JZ 25-700, zone change from AG Agriculture to RS1 Residential Single Family. General location is 2300 West 91st Street. Mrs. Hilton, do you have a staff report for us?
I do. Thank you, Chair West. This is a rezoning on a parcel that was recently approved for a conditional lot split. So the applicant came to us, and we processed the lot split. It was during the actual writing of the staff report that I realized one of the lots didn't conform to the zoning of Ag, and we contacted the owner. We went ahead. You all approved last month the lot split, but it was a conditional approval, and they cannot and have not filed the deeds. Those deeds would be filed only after council has approved their rezoning. So I'm not going to talk a whole lot more about it. The general location is 2300 West 91st Street. It is currently a single-family residential, and the entire parcel is that peach-colored parcel, and then the little tiny piece that we are rezoning is the southeast corner of that whole orange parcel. There is an adjacent street that is public, but this has nothing to do with that street. They have their own private drive and access for all the lots. The zoning request, we advertised it as RS1, but they are asking for a more restrictive zoning, which would be RE, so it requires a larger lot, et cetera. So that is the recommendation to approve the rezoning of this lot from Ag to residential estate.
Any questions of Mrs. Hilton? Maybe no? No? Right. Does the applicant present wish to speak?
I think they're here.
No?
Mm-mm.
All right. We'll go and open the floor to public comment. Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward?
Yes, Jane Donner, 2320 West 92nd. I live just south of this property, and I am just concerned as to what this may mean for future potential development of this area. The property just to the north and west, the father and sister of this said property, will be up for sale next year supposedly. And we have one area developer who has a couple of properties on the west side of Elwood between 71st and 81st, who made it so that there only needs to be .16 acre per dwelling, which could mean possible 62.5 potential dwellings. That is my concern for me and my neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Gentry Sorum. I live at 6143 South New Haven in Tulsa. I represent the McGraths, who are neighbors and who own that street that is next to this. Unfortunately, the lot that is described and the lot split that you guys looked at last month has some bad legal descriptions. So the actual lot split includes that road, which is owned by my clients. I've contacted Cliff Bennett, who is the surveyor. He acknowledges that there was a mistake. He has created a new lot split plat, and we have no objections to the zoning change as long as the legal descriptions are correct.
Makes sense.
So, and I don't, is the owner not here?
No.
Well, it's not like I didn't send out emails. But to me, that's a basic problem when you're splitting something they don't know.
Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, so that's it. And I do have a new plat or new plot when you're ready.
Well, and bring it back again. Third time's a toll.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? All right. We see no one. We'll go ahead and close the floor. Mrs. Hilton, obviously, is that potentially accurate information of?
It could be. I would say, if you feel comfortable, I feel comfortable if you made an approval that said approve with the condition of a corrected lot split, and that would need to be accompanying the rezoning request at the City Council hearing. The configuration of the lots are not going to change. It's still, they're going to do the same three lots. It would just be, it sounds like the eastern boundary that Mr. Bennett used for his pin, I don't know what, I don't know what happened. I have no idea. But it sounds like that legal description is potentially incorrect. So if that is accurate, then I would hope that Mr. Bennett can get it to us, and when I take the rezoning request to City Council, I can take the adjusted lot line at the same time.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I guess maybe I would just feel more comfortable with the correct information before.
Before you pass it?
Before passing.
Before making a recommendation, anyway?
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable making a recommendation without it.
And the owner is not here tonight, you said?
No, sir.
Okay, so that would be a tabling to a next meeting of a specific date.
Continue to the next.
Continue since we've heard it. Okay.
Sure. That sounds good.
Brandon's looking up the meeting date.
December 4th. Oh, Council's the 4th.
So it would be the 4th.
Yep.
Yeah.
December 4th. Continue to December 4th. If I don't hear from Mr. Bennett before then, then we'll assume that, I'll have an update for you no matter what on the 4th, put it that way. It'll either be a corrected adjustment to the lot split and the legal description for the rezoning, or it'll be a statement that it was correct, and we'll hear it again.
Okay. Does that need a motion, Brandon? Yeah, that will require a motion to move that.
I would make a motion to push JZ 25-700 to the December 4th meeting. Continue to the December 4th meeting.
Can I make a comment on? If we don't have any new information, why would we put it on the next agenda? If he's not here to answer any of the questions, why can't it just be tabled until we do hear back from him? So putting it to the next meeting, I don't know, because I mean, is she going to have to come every month until he shows up or we have new information? In other words, what good is it for her to show up next month if it's going to be the same thing if we don't hear?
The reason that we continue it is so that we don't have to go through the entire re-noticing process, so that costs everybody, including the applicant, additional dollars. So I will, I will reach out to them tomorrow and ask if Mr. Bennett can confirm. As a general rule, you all have consistently continued it to the next meeting, but I do understand, and it also gives the public, like, tonight, they know that there will be new information in December 4th.
But your comment of if you hear back from him, it's kind of what threw me off, I guess.
Oh.
When you said that earlier, I didn't know. You're not hearing from him, or if?
Oh, I don't know what he had in the conversation.
The possibility that he may not respond to you or whatever.
Oh, no, he will.
Okay.
He will. I will. I will have an answer for you, no matter what. There will be an answer. We'll either vote on the rezoning and the adjustment to the lot line, or we will continue it to another, but we'll have an answer. Most likely, this is accurate, and he's already on it, so we'll get it worked out for you.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue item three to December 4th. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Let's vote, please. Brandon?
Boers.
Yes.
Nixon.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yep.
Chair West.
Yes. Agenda item number four, under Businesses, Amendments to Article 3, which is the base district's specific standards and Article 7, the signed standards of the unified development ordinance.
Thank you. I got the agenda out and did not, I was leaving town. It feels like every agenda, I either am coming back into town or leaving. It's not true, but that's what it feels like. And so I'm always rushing to get you your information. In this case, I had made the decision, Brandon and I had talked and made the decision that on the Article 3 for, what is the name of that one?
Base Standards.
Standard. Okay. Base District Specific Standards. That was going to be in here. I have some ideas of what I want to do, but in talking to the engineering department and the, I would say, the development team internally, what we really want and what we're really interested in is, one, making sure that Jinx has beautiful new development, because before I came, there was not, there was no landscape requirement. There were landscape ideas, and people would say, I'll do 20%. Well, okay, but what does that include? Like, you're going to put flowers somewhere? It didn't say what had to be where, et cetera. And then the impervious surface coverage, we used to have floor area ratio on non-residential lots, and then there was never really any conversation about residential areas outside of livability space, which we should all probably remember, that livability space is about the actual size of the house. And that was not something that was part of zoning. It was just something that was very common. So the interpretation of livability space is anything that is, has heat and air. So a garage is not part of your livability space. So those are not zoning things. So we did add the impervious surface coverage, and when we did that, that was, we had a couple of goals, and I really don't have to get into all this, but I'm just telling you the why I'm not doing it. So we had a couple of goals in adding impervious surface coverage and removing the floor area ratio. We wanted all the lots to be better landscaped, to have better transition areas, and to have more consistent engineering. To some degree, we've accomplished that, but we've also created some burdens on the development process. And because we're over 90-plus percent built out, I think it's really important to look at some of these, we have a lot of infill lots. We have two that we've rezoned in the last couple of years, one at Fifth and A and one at Aquarium right over here by Edward Jones. And both of those have been extremely, I cannot tell you how hard it has been to develop those lots with our standards. And it's not because our standards are bad, it's just the lots are small, they cost a lot of money, and it would make sense that you'd be like, well, if you, I could say, sorry, you can't do it, but instead, we spend months redesigning and redesigning and trying to get that project off the ground with all the, all the rules and regulations of the UDO. So it is my goal to bring to you from that Article 3, after the city will sit down and have a roundtable discussion with engineers, landscape architects, planners, and builders, so that I can hear from them, where is the pain in the landscaping? Where is the pain in the engineering? Where? And they're not getting a pass, but we have, we have an expectation, and it's really nice, what we've seen. So Seven Brew is beautiful, and when they came in, I said, this will be the nicest Seven Brew you ever do, and they're like, okay. But that lot is 10 times bigger than the project. But then you go to Fifth and A, and the project is the lot. And so it's really easy, when you have a lot of land and a little project, it's really, really hard and very expensive to do a big project, even if it's a tiny building, on a little lot. So just trying to paint a picture of, I think there needs to be some adjustments without lowering the bar, and I think that we can get there. I think we can make some compromises and get there. But there are some very brilliant hydrologists that I would like to invite to the table to this conversation, and some engineers that I trust, and I think that they, they're really good at community design. They don't just read codes and interpret them. They really understand what it means to do a project well. So asking some of them to participate in that process, and then it'll probably be January. I don't think I can get anything to you before then, but, so you didn't have anything in your packet regarding Article 3. Article 7, I added, if you'll pull out the extra thing that I gave you, and if you want to continue this, then I'm fine with that, but I added a little bit on the last page, but I'm going to go through here, but I'm going to use the 1 of 24 document. So we have a lot going on in our sign code. Again, this code is three years old. We've made some changes. I brought some of this to you previously, and tonight I added on page 5 of 24, sports facility sponsorship signs. And we've talked to multiple people who either lease parks from the city or people who want to build or have, like, Titan Sports and things like that. They want to be able to do sponsorship, and signage is really an interesting part of the code because there's, there are laws that protect the content, and then it's a lot. So as it's written, I believe that the city attorney has looked at it. I want her to look over one more time the sports facility sponsorship signs, but you can see there that anywhere that you would have a sporting facility, that the, it should be a temporary sign would be allowed. And by temporary, normally, they don't put up, you know, fancy monument signs. They're usually banners that are for that particular season. So if you played baseball, there's usually signs along the fence that say AAA roofing or, you know, whatever. And we've never really regulated that before, or you have backs, back, I should probably not try to talk sports. Scoreboards, yeah, scoreboards and things, and people like to get their names up there. So this allows them, without any conflict, to do that and kind of put some parameters on what they can do. So that's what you see on page 5. On page 7. I thought I printed. Hang on, let me go to my, let me look at this real quick. Okay. If you will, I'm going to have you flip back to the original packet, so I'm going to kind of use both of these at the same time because it's easier to see. For some reason, the, my tracking didn't show up on the document that I printed for you. So on page 5 there, it talks about, number 3, it says, we've talked about this before, and this is about aligning our code with the ODOT language that's adopted for billboards. So this mirrors what ODOT allows. Ours was, if it's not approved as written, ours would be more restrictive. I've been asked to ask the Planning Commission and the council to allow it to just mirror what ODOT requires right now. So that would change from, signs shall be permitted to sign spacing requirements for billboard signs are found in the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Oklahoma Adventure brochure, billboards may be placed along U.S. federal highways, federal interstate highways, et cetera. So that is the changing, that's the language. It previously said within 300 feet, but now it would just say, if you want a billboard, then look in the ODOT brochure and standards, and that is what would regulate billboards in the city of Jinx. Then if you go to wall signs, this is just a lot of correction, so there was not much consistency, and I went ahead, so if it says 5%, I just wrote in 5% and put it in parentheses, even if it, in some places, we spelled out the word 5, in other places, we put the number 5, and so I tried to just go through and make it all consistent. So that's what you see on the bottom of 5 of 23. Same thing, nothing except for corrections to how we, how we indicate our numbers and whether they're spelling or text, or text or numerical. Monument signs, I have a question for you all to consider. Do you want to allow for digital signs in residential zonings? So that is something that we have, I don't think we have seen anywhere, and that would be Aberdeen Falls decides that they want a digital monument sign in their, at their, near their keypad, so they can advertise all their street parties that they have every two weeks. And so do you want to allow that? Do you want to prohibit that? What are your thoughts? So that was one of my questions that I started, I was like, you know what? We don't really prohibit it, so I guess someone could, but they never have. Just, what do you think? And then, so what we did, so on single-tenant monument signs, there's a lot of red, and then on multi-tenant monument signs, we have some issues, and I'm going to, Jinx Landing is one of the areas. So if you go out to Highway 75 and you have Lost Mariach, is it Lost Mariachis over there? And then you have caliber collision all the way up to the top. So that was a PUD that was done years and years ago, and the way our code is written right now, if we didn't change, didn't change anything, the only lots that would get a larger pole sign, which would be more common with what you would see along the turnpike, 40 feet, x square feet, like a quick trip sign or something like that, they would only be allowed within 300 feet of the highway. So some of those lots are within 300 feet, and other lots are not within 300 feet. And there's a new bank going in, a credit union, Oklahoma Central Credit Union is going in, and they have really wanted a larger sign. It is a pole sign in the sense of, it's on a pole, but it's not like a quick trip sign, which is like a little skinny pencil pole. This is a significant pole with a messaging board and everything. So when we, they have already applied for December for a So when we, they have already applied for December for a sign, an exception to the code for a sign. So that will most likely come to you regardless of the decision we make tonight, make tonight. But when we sat down as a staff, it made more sense to maybe give, we don't really want a QuickTrip-type sign along the highway there. What we would rather have is a, maybe, and I will use Memorial, where the Spirit Bank Events Center is, in that rock, what is it called? Something Rock. That whole, they have a huge multi-tenant monument sign that's very tastefully done, and it has all the little sections. It's very tall, very, very, very tall. And I think that it would be more tasteful to have more height along the highway there, and have either, or both. You could have a taller monument sign, or a taller, a single-tenant monument sign, or multi-tenant monument sign. So giving them an extra 10 or 15 feet in height, and a little more area, rather than just saying you can have a pole sign. So that's what that language is. And I, I probably should have brought an example, so you could see, but it's basically saying that the maximum sign area of 100 square feet is allowed for a single-tenant monument sign within 500 feet of the U.S. federal highways. So that would mean everything along Highway 75, if they were within 500 feet, and we said, from the paving, it's the shortest distance measured from the physical edge of the paving to the sign location. So if they were within 500 feet, the bank could have a significantly larger, not a pole sign, but a significantly larger, single-tenant monument sign, or a multi-tenant monument Am I really complicating it?
I'm not really comprehending.
I know. I, I feel like it's really complicated to explain.
Are you trying to say that it would be more tasteful to have one large multi-tenant sign than each one of those tenants having a, an individual sign, which is then kind of?
I will say, I agree with that statement, but no, that's not what I was trying to say.
Why did you bring up, why'd you bring up that on Memorial with the great big multi-tenant sign?
So that you could get a scale of what we would be allowing. So for the whole Jinks Landing development, they could have a larger, so would you rather have that over there on Memorial, or would you rather have a QuickTrip-type sign? That was what I was getting at.
So your language puts us in a scenario where they could have the multi-tenant sign, but not the large QuickTrip sign? Is that, how is that worded?
Right. So this one does, this one gives them, basically what it does is incentivizes them, if they want the extra height and the extra area, it incentivizes them to go with a monument sign instead of a pole sign.
Okay, which I do prefer.
That makes worse, that, that's probably the best way I've said it so far.
So the key word is monument sign, rather than?
Pole sign.
Pole sign?
Yes.
Where's that at in here again, and how's that worded?
On page seven, or 48 of 76.
Which is actually what?
So when we first started looking at it, we were just looking at pole signs, and then we decided that we would rather just incentivize taller and bigger, for, within 500 feet, taller, bigger signs adjacent to the highway. So the entire campus, the Jinks Landing campus, could still have a multi-tenant sign, and each lot could also have a larger, single-tenant monument sign.
So what's the difference in it being 500 feet, and a billboard being 300 feet?
So on the...
What's the reasoning for that?
Well, the, we went through and measured how often properties were within 300 versus 500 feet, and mostly, there's very little that really meets that criteria. But Jinks Landing is one of them that does meet that. And it's about, mostly, it's 300 to 400 feet. So we could go less, we don't have to do 500, that was just the number that was settled on. And we took 300 out of the original. So if you went back to page 46 of 76, where it says, sign requirements for billboards are found, and we struck within 300 feet, because originally it says, shall be permitted within 300 feet of the highway. So that's a billboard, and then a pole sign standard was...
Marseille, my question on the 300 versus 500, though, because it's not super-specific, or maybe it is, I'm not understanding, is that then do we open ourselves to going from a 300-foot pole sign to a 500-foot pole sign?
That's the distance from the highway to the sign.
Right, okay. So we could still end up with a very large pole sign, you're just saying it'd be further back?
The only people that have that distance requirement, so pole signs are only allowed, currently, the way it's written, within 300 feet of a highway.
Right.
And billboards are only allowed within 300 feet of a highway. And then there's other requirements, like how, how many, like every thousand feet, but it can't be, there can't be one within a thousand on either side, there's quite a few standards. So right now, a pole sign, so I'll, I'll keep using QuickTrip, because I think it's the most iconic in our head, a, a QuickTrip sign could only be, and that's the pencil sign, adjacent to a highway, within, it would have to be within 300 feet of the highway, which is close. Like, you can't get that type of sign unless you're very, your property is very close to the highway.
It's 100 yards.
It's a football field.
Right. But 500 is almost twice that. So, but that only applies to billboard signs and pole signs. So currently, a monument sign, if you wanted a single-tenant monument sign, they are very small. So we're saying, this is our thought, so right now, we'll go over here to, and I, I apologize, this is very hard to follow. So currently, a single-tenant monument sign is 15 square feet, so three by five, so it's very small. And we're saying, if you're within 500 feet of a highway, like at Jinks Landing, Caliber Collision, the new bank, Lost Mariachis, if you're within a highway, you could have a single-tenant monument sign that was 100 square feet. We don't want QuickTrip pencil signs, but we're not necessarily opposed to a larger sign, if it's adjacent to the highway.
And it's monument.
And it's a monument.
Okay, which I prefer.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you.
And if you look on page 49, that is, that's the epitome of a monument sign, and we require landscaping around it, et cetera. So we're saying, you can have a much larger monument sign, you can have a much larger multi-tenant monument sign, if you're within 500 feet, but we're not changing the rules on the pole sign. You still have to be within, I think it says, I'll have to go back on that one, let me If I take out 300, that would also be for pole signs, not just for billboards, and billboards only apply to ODOT.
Well, that was my other question, was on this, the very first item you mentioned, which was removing the information and changing it to, say, from 300 feet to the ODOT specification?
Yes.
I don't know what the ODOT specification is, so don't really know what I'm changing it to.
I will get that to you all. I think a long time ago, I gave you all a copy of it. I'll give you, I'll send it to you this week, I'll send it tomorrow via email, so let me...
So I'm not sure, it's going from 300 to what is in the ODOT, you know?
Yes, I will, I will let you know tomorrow. And if we, like I said, let's talk about it tonight, and see if we have questions, and then think about it, and if we have more questions, we'll probably need to just bring it back in December, because I already have another question in my own mind.
Okay.
Sorry.
I don't know if we require reissuing on all this. My suggestion is that we break this into two different items, because we have amendments to Article Three.
Good idea.
And then, we should then separate Article Seven, that way, because the way this is written, we, because you have basically said, I'm not ready to do Article Three, this is written Article Three and Article Seven, we can't do that.
Yep.
So I would, I would suggest splitting those into two different line items, that way we can consider them separately.
I think that's a good idea.
I will say, if, for whatever reason, or if you wanted to approve Three or Seven tonight, you could do that, and just approve either/or, that is within the bounds to do that, and then council would approve only that one, and then we'd have to just renotice the other one. Legally, you can do that.
Legally, you can, but it would be cleaner if we bring it back as two separate items.
And I don't think we're ready to do either one, so.
I was pretty sure when we jumped into it, it was going to be very clunky, and I was not wrong. Okay, so I think we have a general idea of the direction. I need to send you the ODOT language, so that we're all familiar with that, and I need to think through, if I remove 300 altogether, then pole signs, which currently are allowed right now, within 300 feet, would not be allowed. It would only, and pole signs are not part of the ODOT standards, so I don't think I can remove it completely. I may have to, in that chart, on page, and that was an unintended consequence that I just thought of, so I need to think through that. So on page 46, I need to think through how removing that 300-foot distance from the highway would impact pole signs. Okay.
So, so does this need to be a continuance, or does this need to be a table, since we're changing all of this?
Continue.
Okay.
We'll continue to talk about it next time.
Which would be for the January, what's the date?
December 4th.
December 4th.
You didn't think you would have this put together in time for that meeting?
If we do two separate agenda items, then I can leave Three off, just continue item seven. Are you uncomfortable with the recommendation for continuing Three and Seven?
No, I just didn't think you, I thought you had stated that you would not have time to get all of that put together by the December meeting, and that would need to go to January. So if we need to continue Three to January and readdress Seven in December, that would be two different motions, if we're going to have them on different council, council tables.
Brendan, what would you suggest?
I think you can say, I move to continue this item, which would include item Three. We can continue it, I mean, I might, I, it's not...
My, my, my recommendation, just for simplicity's sake, would be to continue item, this is four, three, four, to December 4th, and then if we cannot get the recommended changes in time, we can just pull that part for then, at that meeting, and we can reissue a notice and deal with it whenever we're ready. That would be my recommendation, just to make things clear and simple on this item. Does that make sense?
Clear and simple.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go through a couple more larger items. We cleaned up the projecting blade signs, so on Main Street, we have really had an issue with nonconformities and, and no one getting a permit, period. Like, just signs come up overnight, in the dark of night, I think they must install them at like 12:01 in the middle of the night, and then they're up and going, and so, howdy doody, you know, we have new signs. So we are cleaning up that to make it, one of the things is a projecting sign. So a blade sign is for the pedestrian experience. When you are walking down a Main Street, in a little shopping center, and you see a sign that says, Pure Food and Market, okay? That tells you that you're approaching a business, and that's the name. And then you go to the next one, and the next one, and you're going to see these little blade signs. They either hang down from an awning, or they're attached to a wall. A projecting sign is something more like Tedford has and used to have, so that one is larger, it is illuminated from within, and it projects from the building above a certain level. And it is more, that sign is designed for the, the driver, for the passenger, for the automotive experience. It is not designed for the pedestrian experience. So we just, we had it named a special sign, and we thought, I was like, I don't know why we're calling it that, a special projecting blade, so we cleaned that up, we're just calling it a projecting sign. And what we did was say, the height and the size of the sign is based on the height of the building. So Tedford would qualify for a larger projecting sign, because they have the taller building. And if you have a one-story building, and you wanted a projecting sign, it's going to be tricky, it's going to be pretty small, because it has to be 10 feet above the head space, and then it, like, there's other parameters, so it's going to make it smaller. So it basically said, you can, you can have an illuminated sign, you, and you're, it's, the area of your sign is based on the height of the building. And we pretty well just doubled it, which is how the code was already written, like, if you, if you had downtown core or local commercial, then you had, we'll just say, 10 square feet, or 5% of the face of the wall, and then for the next zoning category, section of categories, it was 10% of the face of the wall, and then 20% of the face of the wall. So we just kept doubling it on the height in the projecting sign. Dry conversation, isn't it? So on, on page 54, that's where we struck that information on billboards, regardless of which side of the road, because the ODOT does not, it doesn't matter, and our code it does, so you need to be thinking about if it matters to you and to our community. Do you care if every thousand feet, there's a billboard, right now, I can't have a billboard over here between this thousand feet? And are you okay with that? Is it okay to put a billboard there? So just be thinking about that. And...
I remember, I remember us addressing that when we did this.
It just didn't get adopted.
I think we want to keep it, oh, it didn't?
No. It, you made a, Planning Commission made a recommendation, but council did not vote on it.
Oh, yeah.
It was never adopted.
I remember watching that.
That's why it's back, because that conversation, this is round two, on billboards. And what did you say originally? You said, no, we do care?
Yeah, we care.
I thought so. Okay, I thought so, but I'm just saying.
And I'm s...
Who gets the money off of it?
Those signs that are non-conforming, that came up in the middle of the night, are those being addressed?
Yes, we're changing the code.
Okay. Like, does someone go back and, they, they have to, they must have a permit for those signs, so that at some point, they have to file a permit, and maybe it doesn't conform, and it has to come down, but there has to be a permit, correct?
We have been a reactive community, not a proactive, so when some area of the code has been violated, unless someone requests for a code enforcement case to be opened, and something to be investigated, we leave it alone, pretty much.
Whose policy is that? Is that a written policy? Why do we have code enforcement?
No, I don't think it's written.
It just, that penalizes everyone that goes through the permit process.
Yeah, let's do away with the permit process for signs, and we don't even have to talk about this.
Sure make my life easier.
I mean, why have it if you can do it without, and be okay without?
Right.
Any consequence?
I think that is absolutely, code enforcement in every single community, I just got back from a conference, went to a code enforcement session, had a great conversation, listened to multiple communities, very similar situation everywhere, it's, it's basically the same everywhere. I think that some, some communities are proactive, they have been directed by their council, by their city leadership, and they say, this is our expectation, this is what we want. This is what we want." Other communities have had the position of, "We are reactive. We don't have the staff to go out and pursue everything that we see. So we're going to react when there is a, a problem submitted to us." And that has been the stance here and the stance in most of the communities that I have talked to and worked in. It is more common to be reactive than proactive.
Okay, thank you.
So on page 56, I removed on, so temporary signs, again, do you want them? Do you not want them? We've, we've had this conversation before. I said, "Let's go ahead and strike a total of three non-concurrent display periods." So right now, it would say the permitted display period of a permitted temporary sign is 30 days and then you have to be separated by 30 days. But I took out the non-concurrent. So let me know if you agree with that, don't agree with it. The next few pages is again, just cleaning up 16, 16, 30%, et cetera, until we get to this one, I think was left over from our first conversation. Roof signs, unless part of, no, I added this. So on the food hall that you all approved in a few months ago, adjacent to the river, right now, we don't allow signs on the roofs. And they have an illustration in their PUD that shows Jinx Market and it's on the top of their first, I will call, veranda. It's not on top of the actual larger building, but it is on top of the veranda. So that would be a roof sign. I personally am not opposed to roof signs. I think they can be well done. It's kind of iconic and fun when, when you're at the Riverwalk or something and someone's got all their letters spelled out. It can be cute. So I just said, roof signs, previously it says are prohibited, but I said unless they are part of an approved PUD or have Planning Commission approval. So it would just come to you and you could say, "We like it, but it's too big, too small, wrong color, whatever." That was my thought. Allow them, but within certain parameters. Outline lighting, I was more specific this time on windows, facades and roofs, excluding seasonal decor, because people come and report seasonal lights to us and we don't, we're not regulating seasonal lights. Just we're not. So put up thicker curtains for Christmas. That's all I've got to say. And then on pennants, on all of these signs with flashing lights, snipe signs, pennants, streamers, spinners, propellers, inflatable shapes, none of those are currently allowed. But we recently had a business come in and they put up pennants everywhere and nobody seemed to care. So I thought, well, we may as well strike it if we're, if nobody cares. So when a new business comes in, you know, the old-fashioned pennants and they just string them everywhere. They would still have to follow the other rules, but I just took it out of prohibited signs. So let me know if you want it in or want it out. I don't have a strong opinion. The cabinet signs are prohibited in the downtown core and the riverfront tourist. And I gave you an example and it's basically just a big double-sided, self-illuminated sign, just a big box generally. Could be a circle, but it's just usually a big box. And it can be a cabinet sign on a wall. It can be a wall sign. Remember, like in the 80s, like people would just be on Main Street and put a big, it's a big white box and it would have writing, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Lordy, look who's 40.
So that would be, and I think that's about it. So lots to think about and look at. And I'm fine if you say you don't want to change anything. That's your recommendation. I respect that, but this is what I came up with. I will send you the ODOT information tomorrow. And I apologize, I didn't have it for you. So we'll talk about it again in December, it sounds like, based on a recommendation. So unless you have more questions right now. Greg?
No.
Ray? Did I hit the high point? Make sure you go through and read the sports thing.
With the sports, how would the Big Shields Monument sign out at the old Titan Sports on Elwood? How does that work with temporary signs?
They already, in their PUD, they already had a, had, they were allowed a very large sign, a monument sign. Yeah. And then, so there was a question of the, the artwork on top. And I said, "Artwork's great." And I did not include it in the computation of the size of the?
A motion to continue this to December 4th as well.
I make a motion that we continue item 4 to December 4th meeting.
Second.
Vote please, Brandon.
Boris?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Chair West?
Yes. Other business, any planning updates?
I have a?
Was it the calendar action item?
Oh, yeah, where is that?
Yes.
Number five.
Yeah, number five. Adoption of 2026 Planning Commission meeting dates, which I'm currently entering.
So this keeps it at the first Tuesday, first Thursday following the first council meeting, which is generally the first Tuesday of the month. So that schedule does not change. I think that it's a very challenging date for Gina. So I don't see any reason. I know we ran into a lot of holidays when we went to the third Thursday. So I, I personally prefer it the way it is. I also like for Planning Commission to hear it and then try to get it on the council agenda in the same month. It just, it's, for my brain, it's a lot cleaner process. So it keeps it there and you all can take action. You can continue it. It's up to you. But Brandon did a good job of putting it together and he has the holidays on here as well. So it kind of lets you know if you're close to a holiday.
I like the date. Works.
I would make a motion that we approve item 5, the adoption of the 2026 Planning Commission meeting dates.
A second.
Vote Brandon.
Boris?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Chair West?
Yes. And no other business, planning updates?
If you want a detailed, more comprehensive update on the downtown master plan, you all have seen pieces of it. The, the piece that you maybe have not seen yet is the parking portion. Did we bring it earlier? Did we bring the parking conversation to you all? Okay, it will still come. But we went ahead and put it on the council agenda earlier in the week. As an FYI, Beck Designs done a great job overseeing the downtown master plan project. They hit all their benchmarks. I probably am the weak link in holding things up just because we started on the ranch master plan and that took up quite a bit of the summer. So we should be getting that final document together and getting that out to you all. Then we also will bring the ranch downtown master, or the ranch master plan to you all. I'll probably have that one to you in December. So very excited, had really great turnout. I'm just so pleased with the turnout and the participation. I think that it was very exciting. We used a lot of different tools for the public engagement and it went over really well. So thank you all, if you did attend. I think I saw most of you there, so thank you.
Thank you, Marseille. We will adjourn at 7:00 PM.